And I am going to call the meeting of the board. The board meeting of our corporate authorities to order. Would you please stand and I'll keep the practical meetings open.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you trustee for the. This is the mayor who leads the pledge of allegiance, but I do appreciate your doing it this time. Let's be careful next time around. Allow the mayor to handle the position that he serves. Madam clerk, may I have your call please?
Yes ma'am, trustee Burns is absent.
Oh shoot, she snuck in. I was trying to call you.
Trustee Burns is here. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Sap. And trustee Sterling.
Thank you, it's sweet to have you. Normally we have pastor Pitts to bring meditation. And we're going to still have pastor Pitts bring meditation. But I'm going to also ask that you and Reverend Freeman do a tag team. You do one part of your prayer and then she, so I'm going to ask both of you. I know you all didn't know about this, but that's okay. You can always count on me to bring something a little different for you. So can I ask both of you to go to the mic now please? And lead us in prayer. We'll toss a coin right off you. That reminds me, before you get started, may I ask everyone to silence your devices please?
Testing, testing. One, two, three. All right, may I ask anyone to stand please? If that's okay? It's just showing reverence to the Lord when you stand. I don't want to make this apology mayor and trustees. I'm gonna have to leave after I pray. But just for everyone to know my apologies. I use my status for everybody to know I will be able to stay. But I did want to come here and I think prayer is so very, very, very important. Let us bow our heads. Dear Lord Jesus, we thank you Lord for this time in this place. Lord, we're coming together right here in Salt Village, Illinois. Lord, that you bless us and you keep us. Lord, the things we say and the things we do. Let us keep them before the people. Let us do our best job that we can. This is all I'm coming here to pray for. To help unite us and we can find a common ground among everything that we say and do. That we come here for nothing else, that we learn to love one another. We can be disagreeable, we can have a little this and a little that. But at the end of the day, goodbye, I'll see you next week. So Lord, I'm asking this in the name of Jesus. That you keep us, that you be with us, that you lead us, guide us, order our footsteps in everything that we say and do. This is my prayer, I pray it in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank God and amen.
Thank you pastor.
There are many traditions and many faiths throughout the universe. There are many, can you hear me now? Many traditions and many faiths throughout the universe. But all have one in common. If you are Middle Eastern, the greetings are Salaam alaikum. If you are Jewish, the greetings are Salam. If you are Christian, the greetings are peace beyond to you. If you are Hindu, like Mahatma S. Gandhi, the greetings are Namastas. Meaning my soul bows to your soul. And so, in that tradition of all people and all faiths, and if you are not a religious person, but you are a spiritual person, my soul greets your soul. And so we ask that, in the honor of peace, that we would mind, body, and spirit, respect each other, hear each other, and honor the breath of life that is in each person in this room. And may God bless our leadership, our mayor, our clerk, and all of those trustees who, Lord God, we have entrusted. Bless our lawyers, bless our administrator, bless our villagers. Let the words of our mouth and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable to the God or to the spirit in which each of us serve. And each person may close in the name of the God or the spirit in which they worship. Amen, amen. Please be seated.
Praise the Lord to our, to both of our ministers.
God bless you too.
Bless you, be well and thank you. Moving on with the agenda, we will not have executive closing session, correct clerk? Okay, so then that being said, we're gonna move on to item three, which is to approve the minutes. And our village clerk Debbie Williams, lead that piece.
Thank you ma'am mayor. I'm going to pull the executive session minutes off of this agenda because we will not be going into executive session. I don't want to go in there just for the, for executive session minutes. So we'll table those till next time. But in the meantime, we do have the, approve the journal of proceedings for June 10th, 2025. June 17th, committee of the whole, 2025. June 24th, regular board, 6/24/2025. And committee meeting of the whole, July 1st, 2025. I'm asking that those be approved tonight. You can either do it by consent or we can do them individually. Thank you.
I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes as presented and stated by consent, please. There's a motion on the floor to be, to approve each one of them. May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or are there any minutes that someone would like to see removed? Hearing not yet. Madam clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. You meant, yes, I'm sorry. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Sap. Trustee Sterling. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved that we accept that consent agenda and that all of the minutes as presented be approved. Moving on, we're going to public comment. And what's written on your agenda says that all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Not only do I request that they be directed to me, I'm going to still ask that no names be given. No names. I think that we tried that last week and it just really helped to produce a very meaningful meeting that had a great deal of decorum. And so therefore, I'm going to ask that you not call names nor imply. You may use a title if you so desire. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak. You will have up to three minutes to speak. And you may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. Our village clerk will let you know when you have one minute remaining on your public comment. Once you says time or you hear the buzzer or whatever, you may complete that sentence and no more. Is that understood? Is everyone in agreement with it?
No.
Okay, thank you very much under your public comment. You may share with us what your dissenting opinion is and I appreciate that. I will respond to the best of my ability to all questions once all public comment is completed. I am going to ask that if you have intentions of ruling public comment, that we get a line now. Because after that line is finished, no one else may come before the board. If you are going to bring public comment, I'm asking you to move quickly to the rear of the line. And I can't see who's the last person in line. Is that Kathy? Betcha? No, it said, um, this. Okay, no one will speak after that, okay? Let's move in the order. I'm going to ask that you, you do not have to use all three of your minutes, but we, not rushing you through, but take your time. Give us the story or whatever it is that you need. And then quickly take your seat so that the next person can come forward. Okay? Ma'am, state your first and last name. First and last name.
Just, okay, so. The problem of stray dogs. Her little baby, which is all teeth and food, got ripped to shreds by a pit bull and shepherd mix that jumped over her fence and killed her little mom. Then, so it started, we're to the line. On my camera, I have a pit bull and a husky. I show you pictures. I don't have pictures of the dogs that jumped over her fence. I have some of the ones in my, the different stores. Anyway, the two that jumped over my yard were growling at my little dog. It mattered to growling, but even if I told it, she wouldn't have. But they chased after her cat and they couldn't come to the beginning and they left. He said they smelled the luck because their other two dogs already killed their little mom. And she devastated, I devastated. But the problem is, I called police, they said we have no power control. And we had to deal with Cook County. But we can't, we don't even call them after the fact. And we need somebody picking up stray dogs. If people aren't going to take their dogs. Because next time, those two shepherd, they wanted to go to the mall and their neighbors' dogs, they came to my yard. My husband was ready to kill them because they said, if they're gonna attack, you kill them because they were growling at me.
One more minute, one more minute.
So that's really all I wanted to address. Can't keep getting to County, they're making rhymes every once in a while and pick up those stray big dogs, dogs that are dangerous. Because it could have been a kid. Okay?
Thank you ma'am.
I'm sorry, you need to speak up your name please.
My name? My name? My name is Mike.
And you can pick the mic up as well.
Amanda Myers.
Because I know your name before the tape, we need to.
I mean, can you hear, can you hear me now?
I can't.
Amanda Myers. Okay, I said 2110, 2115 place. I have to say it because ain't nobody paying down my block yet, okay? There's street ranches on my block. We need a stop sign. There's kids on that block. Anybody can come around that curb and get hit. And another thing, I need, um, what else would I say? There's something else, there's something else, but I, I let you guys know when I, when I. I let you guys know, we need that stop sign on Orihara, right there on Orihara, at the corner.
What time did it order young?
215 place. That's a four-way, that's a four-way stop sign.
It's a four-way stop? Were all four stop signs there prior? Were all four stop signs on each of the corners? There's never been?
The only reason, no, it's never been. The only reason why that stop sign should be there is because if a bus comes, the kids about to go back to school. And when that bus comes, that's the only stop sign they see. It's when that, that bus stop sign comes out. And we need more than just that bus stop sign. Because, because people go around the bus. I, well, when I think about the other question, I'm ready.
Okay, and you know you're more than welcome to call me when you're desperate. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Linda Washington. And I'm here tonight to talk to you as a community activist for the South suburbs. I want to thank the mayor and the clerk and the other elected officials and the trustees. I came by and I dropped off some information in regard to our 15th year banquet that we have for women that are victims of domestic violence. And we've had this for 15 years straight in the South suburbs. And it is my desire and my hope that the ladies in Salt Village that are on our list that would love to attend this banquet. It's a motivational banquet, it's a dinner and it's inspirational. A lot of them have gone through some very traumatic experiences. And with you, the elected officials, I think all of your committees have a budget. You can either purchase tickets to come yourself or you can sponsor some young ladies that would love to come. So I would like to take this opportunity. You're my third municipality tonight and I have another one to go to. Amen, but I wanted to come personally because I used to live in the village and I know a lot of young ladies out here that could benefit from you allowing them to be blessed to attend this annual banquet that we have on their behalf. Where it's shining a bright light on women that are victims of domestic violence with some other organizations that we partner with. So the letter that you received, I hope that you read it and that you would honor some of the ladies in your community to be able to attend. Thank you and do have a great night.
Thank you. Next please.
Good evening, my name is Rochelle Jones and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight on behalf of Tangible Dreams. Couple of months ago, we came before this committee to request zoning approval for a women's recovery home in Salt Village. A home that would provide structure, support, and second chances for women on their journey to healing and stability. Since that meeting, we have not received any formal decision from the board. Despite sending emails and making follow-up calls to the office, we have yet to receive full clarity on where we stand. Tonight, we return not to just follow up, but to respectfully ask this committee to reconsider and grant the zoning approval for our recovery home. Since our last conversation, we've taken tangible steps to connect with and involve the community. We created a good neighbor letter and petition which outlines our mission, goals, and how our recovery home will positively impact the neighborhood. We are in the process of delivering this letter to all the homes within a 200-foot radius of our proposed location to ensure transparency and understanding. We've also taken our community engagement a step further by developing a mobile app, a tool that makes it easier for residents to access and sign our petition, to learn about our hygiene drive where we're collecting and distributing hygiene products to those in need, explore a growing directory of local and statewide community resources, and participate in our community cleanup program which connects individuals in need of community service hours with residents in parks that needs yard cleanup or maintenance. Our vision has always been more than just housing. It's about building bridges. It's about empowering men and women, improving neighborhoods, and giving back to the very village we want our residents to call home. We believe Salt Village is the right place for this kind of transformation. And we want to do things the right way, with the board's blessing and with the community's trust. So I ask madam mayor and board members to please reconsider our zoning request. Let us move forward in partnership to create something meaningful, healing, and rooted in service right here in Salt Village. Thank you for your time and we remain open to any questions or further steps you may need from us to proceed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good afternoon board, trustees and directors, chief, and residents. My name is Larry Sap. My name is Larry Sap. Look, I just have a public announcement. I'm hoping that, you know, all the trustees can start at some point just trying to do something together, collaborate on something. So the mayor's office of planning and events is hosting a Zoom meeting. I believe we're gonna do it on Monday. And we're asking that everyone who has already put in their application to be on any committee, be looking out for your link to the Zoom tomorrow at the latest. And anyone who wants to be a part of it, anyone, we don't care what your politics are. We just want to make something happen good in this village. So anyone who wants to be a part of it, you can give me your contact information or you can turn in your application right now, today, and get on this Zoom so we can start planning events for the summer and the fall and the winter. Anybody who wants to join, regardless of your politics, join us, please, thank you.
Thank you.
David Fields. Good evening, madam mayor, board of trustees. Madam mayor, I want to comment on, on the comment that you spoke about, saying that you were gonna be HR. And you said you were gonna be HR. I think if you were elected, you were elected to be the mayor. I think you have a lot of the duty that needs of all your attention to. Then trying to be a HR, and it makes me wonder, you're trying to be HR. What's going on here? What's really going on? What is this all about? Because as the mayor, you have enough things on your plate to attend to as far as this village goes. Why not hire someone to be HR that's qualified to be HR? That has all credentials to be HR? Why would you want to take on that duty when you got all these other duties here and all these other things that need your attention? So I'm just, like again, I'm just curious. What's really going on? What is your, what is your agenda? What is your real agenda for trying to be HR? Because there's something.
Sir, you've asked that question three times now. Do you have something else to contribute to that question? If not, do you have anything additional? Because you've asked the question three times.
I have the opportunity to, to comment on everything that's seen, everybody that comes up here. And on these three minutes, I wish you would allow me those three minutes.
Not the same thing sir. If you look behind you, you see the number.
Madam mayor, this is what you spoke about. That's all, I'm speaking about what you spoke about.
I'm just saying, say something different. You've said the same thing three times. Thank you.
Madam mayor, I spoke about what you spoke about. That's what I'm speaking about. This isn't something I made up, these words came out of your mouth. Like I said, I'm just curious, what's the.
I will answer your question after everyone has had an opportunity sir, to speak.
Excuse me, madam clerk, is my time up?
I said, when she starts picking that up.
Okay, thank you. So let me know when I can resume please. All right, thank you, thank you. Again, like I said, madam mayor, about what is this really all about? Why do you want to be HR? Why do you want to be HR? Something is up with this. You are mayor, you're not a HR employee. Hire someone for HR, thank you.
Thank you sir, next.
Good evening Reverend Don. Just three quick things. One is the Illinois Mutual Retirement Vet. Yeah, you got it, vet. I don't, I know when I worked for the federal government, when we withheld or any, when any entity withheld a signer, that entity became legally responsible. And that is very important whether it is social security or retirement. When you put money into an account and when a business puts money into account, you then become accountable and responsible. And when I was a revenue officer, if you did not do what you were supposed to do for that, you can be held accountable. So I, and people need their retirement. I don't, so I was just putting that out there because that weighs my heart that people are not giving their money. The other thing is, when I was watching the video on the committee, the gas station that I think is going to come forth this, I think is coming this evening. And I keep hearing people say, we need a grocery store. And we do need a grocery store. But we also have to understand that viable businesses help to bloom our economy. The taxes that come help to bloom our village. And so once businesses, good businesses start coming in, and a gas station sounded very good, I, you know, that is something that helps to bloom our economy. It is not about one person that sits at that seat. I said this when we had another mayor, I say this again. I said it then, I'll say it now. It is about the people in this village and everybody taking care of the people in this village. And the last thing that I have to say is at some, it won't even take that long. At one, at some point in time, because we do need a grocery store. We don't need to give away land. But we do need a grocery store. And I would like, if we need to research it, if you need community volunteers, I had called all these myself when they were with another mayor here. If you need some help just researching to see if something can be done, I will be more than happy to donate my time for our village to have what it needs to have. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you.
Hi, madam mayor and the board. My name is Darren Maywood, from DMC Contractors. Can you hear me now? I'm from DMC Contractors. Over a year ago, we did 300,000 plus dollars of concrete work in your village. We have not been paid for that work that has been completed. Your board approved the payment to us two times in the past administration, but the mayor would not sign our check. Then when you became mayor now, we were informed that the check didn't have a form, couldn't vote on it. Your attorney presented to us that it was just a matter of time. And then we were informed the check was cut and just needed a signature. Your attorney asked us to prepare releases so we could be paid in full, dollar on dollar. He reiterated to the judge that they're going to pay this bill. And then today, your attorney says, no, we're gonna fight this bill. So my question to you is, you plan on paying us for our work? And what steps do we have to work together to try to reconcile this situation? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a minority company. I said, my name is Rivero Rivera. We're, we're partners in this, we are a minority company. It just seems that we keep getting hurt regarding this. He did say that this has been going on between the mayor, which promised us to get paid and so forth. The trustee that I talked to at those nights, he said the check was ready for us. I followed the mayor signing the check and it's going to be here. Now, we've heard us. And I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thanks sir.
David Smith, resident. First, as everybody says, I'm always negative up here. Let me applaud you all for getting the meeting minutes and the agendas on the village website. Thank you. Hopefully we can get some more upgrades and get everything fully fixed. You know, I'm not always negative. But unfortunately. Now let me get to the thing. Trustee Johnson brought up a very valid point last week about Altech Digital Solutions. Altech, the IT company, they were owned by Rick Ford. They were Tazrick, our former IT provider. Their service was horrible and our capabilities were horrible under his Tazrick network.
Their service was horrible and our capabilities were horrible under his Tazrick network. It's ironic that he comes to the village with a new company name, looking to provide the same services. I don't agree with that. If they were bad, then they'll be bad now, why did he switch his company name? What happened to that company? Which is also the same company, when I did research, I found out that they were doing your campaign video. I just think it's a possible conflict of interest and I don't personally agree with it. Regarding public comments, for the record, it's against the law, and let me just quote. "According to the Attorney General, restricting comments criticizing elected officials by name in connection with public matters is impermissible. The rules may not prohibit comments that criticize government or government staff or officials." I do not agree with your policy that you're enforcing right now, and neither does the Attorney General or any of the courts in the state of really know. If you choose to further sort of restrict our comments, you're gonna be subject, and the village is gonna be subject to lawsuits. And I'm pretty sure your village attorney is right here, and I'm pretty sure he will agree with my statement. Finally, my FOIA request from a few weeks ago. I'm still waiting on the records from the June 19 event. I was told that there are no village records, no financial records for the Juneteenth event at all. This is completely unacceptable. Everybody knows that trustee Burns' husband, Jeffrey Burns, was allowed to collect money through his personal sale and cash flow on behalf of the village. This is totally unacceptable, and his comments are totally unacceptable.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to stop too. Sir, until you resolve it with the state's attorney's office,
If that's what you want me to do.
Do it with them, but, I'm not gonna argue with you, but when I ask specifically that you do not call names, until the matter is resolved, I'm going to respectfully ask, do not call names. If I'm sued in the process, just like I told you last week, so be it, but I'm going to do what is necessary to maintain order in this rotunda, and when you call people out by name, it makes them defensive, and then you guys get ready to go to blows. I'm not going there tonight. So, if you wish to continue your public comment right now, you will not call a name. Otherwise, you will be sat down. Am I clear?
You're clear, but am I?
Do not call names. Give him his time back, please.
Now, how much time do I have left? Now, I hope that I am clear. I just read the law to you, and if you restrict my public comments, I will sue you and the village. Because again, Jeffrey Burns accepted money on behalf of the village, and everybody should know it. And he's also the person that you appointed as a trustee, and it's interesting that you didn't wanna bring him before the Board for a vote. Why is that? You said last week, because the trustee didn't show up, well, they're here now. Why you didn't bring him for a vote? I don't even believe you wanted to appoint him. You're using him as a filter so you can walk in your first appointment. And all of these illegal tactics are not gonna end up well, because I studied the law and I know it. And just like you've been guilty on your first two challenges that I put in with the Attorney General, you'll be guilty on the rest.
Well, I'm Francine Anderson, and I guess you're gonna restrict my time as well. But dear people, the law to you, and you asked us not to use names, but you are really going against our personal member rights, and we also just read to you exactly what the Attorney General said. So, Madam Mayor, what I would say to you is, if you are going to willfully disagree with the law, then you need to make an equitable favor. Last week, you said the reason why you were restricting names was because of the decorum. The person that started the decorum with the issue today, you didn't have him removed. He just said, somebody call his name, he gonna answer. He answered, but instead, you talked to the person with the mic, you didn't talk to the person who started the decorum problem. So let's get, let's be fair, if you're gonna be fair, be fair with everyone. But my comments, I came, I wanted to talk about this personal member right that you were restricting. When you all decided to become public officials, you decided that your name was public, that your images was public, and that everything that you do is uprooting by the people who hired you. And that is the citizens of this town. So either we be fair with everyone, and not be, don't just have your own picks, because first of all, the only trustee that had problems with people saying their name was trustee Burns, and I'm saying her name. Because she is the person, and her husband is the person who had problems with the decorum. So why are you blaming your sisters? I'm through with that. The second thing is, I wanna talk about what Mr. Finch said at the last meeting. Mr. Finch said that we have 800 meters. If we have 800 meters, that's what you said, because I listen, wait, and I'll take this over, I'm prepared. Okay, you said we had 800 meters. If we got 800 meters, then I wanna understand why we have a water problem. If one of those meters are gone, are you gonna find a way to put them in our homes so that we don't continue to have issues with water? The other problem is, Mr. Finch last time, when he was given permission to talk, that man took up 45 to 55 minutes of time. So in every meeting, is he gonna have 55 minutes of our time? Can he just give a report and not come back and forth with policies of reprimanding other trustees, reprimanding citizens that came to speak? So if he asks a comment from me, then that him saying to me at a different time, I'll bring it in this voice, I'm not going in. The other thing is that, I would like to know from you, Madam Mayor, why is it possible that we have been able to hire the wife of a trustee to work in public work? I asked that question before, and I was told that I couldn't mention her name. But you already know her name, so you need me to mention her name, or can you answer that question without me saying her name?
I can answer the question without you saying her name. Please continue.
Oh, I will. And the other thing I would like to know, in, with Mr. Finch, he also mentioned in a report last week that, that, uh, he will be willing to come and work on Sundays. You all have said you have hired a lot of people, why is he coming for overtime? Explain.
See, they can't stand this too, this too.
Y'all understand, because he can be saying something to yourself.
Hi, good evening, now. I'm sorry.
Wait until it's quiet, I want you to have four, three minutes, okay?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Myrna Pearson, a longtime resident of South Village. I was here two weeks ago, I only have, uh, one thing to mention, and that's to the road district. I mentioned to you about the storm drains not getting cleaned, so when it rained at storm, even though our site, our street got fully taken care of. Somebody mentioned to me about the forms, where's the forms? They're not available to fill that out. So, can that be addressed, please? And then the other thing is, I just wanna thank South Village Fire Department for coming out when we had a tree branch in a neighbor's yard not kept power out, and all that kind of stuff. They came out to make sure residents were good, and there was no fires and everything else, so I appreciate the South Village Fire Department. On that behalf, my son was the one who called at 2:00 in the morning, he didn't know the problem was out until I got up. Thank you.
Can't be better. I'm here because last week someone asked why he wasn't hearing about the 7,000, 8,000, and 10,000, and it's all being real quiet. The only reason I'm not here saying anything about it every week like I was is because the people responsible for it that can answer the questions aren't here anymore. They're gone. So, we will still be investigating, I'm sure, and when it is found out what happened to that money, I will be right back here asking, demanding that we prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. That's why I came here originally to talk. But tonight, I am hearing a lot of name calling, which was asked not to be said. Why can't we have a little respect for the chair? If you don't respect the mayor, at least respect the physician. She asked you not to call names, not to start trouble, but there are a certain few individuals that insist on calling out people by name. They're the ones causing the problem, and I wish they'd stop, because I wanna see our meetings go on in a neighborly fashion. Thank you.
Well, Detective Jacobich here, Miss Positive of All. So first of all, the fire department ambulance is fantastic. They've been down my street, I think, every night. I don't know, one of my neighbors has been ill, but I've seen them red lights every night. Are you a public works clerk? We weren't here before, I have one little room light, not about the public works clerk anymore. I have about 13 kids on my block, we need some speedboats. Um, over there by Carol and 216th, no, 217th Place, they have the big speedboats. I'm on 217th Street, we have none, so everybody wants to go fast, including the ambulance, but that's okay. Because they need to. And like I said, we have about 13 kids, if not more, and people just zoom back. But I do have to say thank you to everybody on the Board, you guys are doing a great job. I wish we do get some more business in here, because we do need more business. Mr. Finch, you can speak for all, all you wanna speak, I enjoy listening to you. And I just wanna say, ladies are doing a great job, and gentlemen, thank you. And again, hi there, have a great day.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes, um, the Board's biggest comment. I, I think that I will ask, and I don't think that is unreasonable, to see if the Cook County Council Control can make some random visits to up and down our streets to see what they need, so we will research that and see what we can come up with. And that's a wonderful idea, thank you very much, Board. Uh, two ladies lost her, her baby, know that, you have my condolences, and I am very sorry for your loss. And it lets us know that we have to do some new efforts, you know, for, so hopefully you pardon the Cook County. The stop sign. I honestly don't even think we need to do a survey to determine whether or not we need to use stop signs at 252 Place in Cory and where the school is concerned. I, I would like to see that happen. I'm going to ask public works clerk, uh, spell what needs to be done to make happen and to make it happen as soon as possible. Schools start back in a couple of weeks, I would like to see the signs, if we post new start back. And I don't have to take that too seriously. President Jones, when the schools start back?
Yeah, she said when the schools start.
When the schools start back?
August 18th, don't you?
August 18th, you need that other sign up here for August 18th start. Thank you, we know, we know. The bank fundraiser, we were invited to do a fundraiser by the former trustee. However, she mentioned funds that were allocated by the village. I do not think it's likely to be given with those funds, however, I invite you to support on your own accord. The zoning for the home that was presented before. Basically, a discussion was made at a committee of the whole league, and I can call that, and a lot of what was stated tonight was what was presented toward the committee of the whole league. That is not sufficient to rule any project, and especially if zoning needs to be considered, you would need to present a formalized program or project description written, not read. So we can move forward until you present to us what needs to be done. And you mentioned writing a letter to your neighborhoods, you understand that part there, we would have to have a public hearing with the zoning board, and in order to do that, we would have to invite some of those same people to that meeting to express whether or not they are in agreement with having such a housing unit in their vicinity. So, we probably need to communicate again, and then we connect you with the zoning board so that they can share with you some of the steps. I would also invite you to invest in an attorney who can direct your path, but what we have from your organization right now is not sufficient for the village to do anything. Thank you. There is a Zoom meeting, as was stated, and we'll get you that information. Someone asked, "Why am I doing HR?" Why am I doing HR? Why am I doing HR? Is it better now?
Yes.
Why am I doing HR? Why am I working with the building department? Why am I renting out the community center? Why am I following up with rentals and cleaning, making certain that it's clean? Why am I putting mops and brush brooms back? Why am I doing that so that another program can go in if it wasn't done correctly? I have been asked, "How come I don't have anyone to do it?" I do it because there's no one to do it, and I'm surprised that that question came forth today because I expressed those same sentiments yesterday. Why am I doing HR? Everyone that wants to serve the village of South Village, as the HR consultant, representative, specialist, whatever name they decide to call themselves, they want to work part-time and remotely, part-time and remotely, for $95,000 a year. We do not have $95,000 a year to pay anyone to work part-time and to work remotely. Let's talk about those that work remotely. The last HR person that we had, how many complaints did we get from trustees and residents, and for that matter, employees, who did not have access to HR when they needed access? That's why I'm not doing HR, I'm picking up the pieces that's required in order to keep this village afloat. As I shared with many of you, there is no job too big or too small for me to handle. I am a servant of this village, and as a servant, you have to do whatever needs to be done. Have I asked for volunteers to assist me? Yes, I have. Have they stepped up to the plate to help me? Some have for a while, but then others, their life keeps liting, and they have to go ahead and take care of their own responsibilities. But that does not stop the need for the Village of South Village administration to move.
to move forward and take care of the business that they need to take care of. You're going to hear a little bit later this evening that I have been asking to be the designated signature for IMRF, which are employee benefits, which is normally done by the mayor. We've never passed that. So, but that's okay, because I was going to say this later. I'm going to say it now instead. It has to be done. We've taken monies out of people's paychecks. They are owed their monies. They're owed their funds. Someone has to do it. So a little bit later, my recommendation, my ask, will be to allow our village clerk to handle that position. But it has to be done. There are some things that must be done as an organization. And sometimes if it's not done, guess what? People file for you, for yous against you, and file lawsuits, and/or threaten to file lawsuits, and some of them rightfully so, especially those who cannot get access to their retirement funds after they have left employment with the village. Am I clear? Do you understand why? Do you understand why a part-time mayor typically works eight to nine hours here, but then still do work at home and still wake up at two, three o'clock in the morning with things on her mind that needs to be done, and then start typing up the emails and then too embarrassed to send them out? So I put them in the drafts so that then I can send them at the appropriate time. Do I want to do this? Absolutely not. Do I want to have total charge? No, I do not. Do I want five or six positions? No, I do not. I ran to be the mayor of the Village of South Village. None of the other things that I'm doing. But you know what? The servant in me says, we cannot let this village fail. And I'm not going to let this village fail. And so if I have to go day and night to pick up pieces, you can fault me for it, because I'm going to do it. I'm going to pick them up. We're not going to go totally under because you think that I have some ulterior motives for doing more work. Thank you very much. I think I've exhausted that. Let me go back up to you. Oh, branches. I only talked about the stop sign. I'm sorry. I know that we had times when we were picking up branches. However, because we have public works here, I'm going to defer to the person that's there. I don't mind giving up conversation and putting the onus where it belongs. I don't mind that at all. So I'm not going to endeavor to answer that. However, Mr. Gates, when you give your presentation, I would ask that you address the branches. And I have something about sheets. What was said about sheets? Sheet. Did you say anything about sheets? I can't read my own writing, but definitely address the branches, okay? Moving on down, we talked about IMRF, viable businesses. We need viable businesses. We know we need grocery stores. We need a whole lot in this village. But we have a democracy here, and just because someone come before us and present a concept for a store does not mean that we are beholden to it and that we have to accept it. It still has to go through the process. So we're at a point now where any business that want to come into the village to do business with the village, we are asking them to come before the board. But that doesn't mean that everybody that comes before the board who wants a business, that is expected that the trustees are going to automatically approve it. And we have to go with democracy. They will get the vote, okay? DMC contractors, two of you talked about that. You know, it's really interesting, because you're right, it's been more than a year. At one time it was there 400, one time it was, we owed you 375. The price keeps changing.
No, no.
Excuse me, you've had your chance to talk, okay? I'm responding. If you have a counterstatement, which was stated already, no rebuttals, you can talk to me personally, okay? But I do know that they went to court today. I know that we looked at some of the invoices. We still don't have all of the invoices. At one time, there was a listing out of all of the homes that were served by that project. That just happened to disappear too. So there is no way that we can even go back now and check exactly where and how you did the work because it's not listed, the exact location is not listed on your invoices. And along with yours, there's another one also that we have that is just throwing out money, things that we owe them from 2022, 2023, 2024. But we do not have firm determination that the work was done. So my suggestion is, present exactly what homes, what streets, what location you guys performed that work, because we don't have evidence of that. The doc, you may have so, but please don't. No records were left in this building that took place before we took office. We do not have it. I can only do what I believe is what will protect our village from other people. I'm telling you, I got bills to date. Sir, you're going to talk to me on your own, on our time, not during my time, okay? You must respect when we say no counterreplies, no rebuttals. That's what that means. And I'm going to ask you for your respect as well. And so we'll continue our conversation offline. We won't do any more of it here. The company. The company, what happened to that company? Hmm. I don't know. But the company that we opened bids for last week, they will be coming to a vote tonight, and trustees have an opportunity to approve it or not to approve it. And then if we need to go back out to bid, we will do so. You must acknowledge that bids were opened in this arena. So therefore, there was no way of knowing exactly who bid it until we opened the bids. It was all done legally, decently, in order. And I do appreciate the person who brought forth that it's the same individual who did work with us before and/or who assisted me. Who assisted me with my campaign literature. Did not know it was one and the same, and that's honest to God true. Public comments. As I said last week, file whatever lawsuit that you feel is needed. However, I am going to invite, since we love to do research and Google searches, I'm going to invite anyone that has a problem with how I'm conducting public comment to review some of the other villages and cities and how they conduct their public comment. Some of them limited to 30 minutes only. As long as it's written. When I first started as mayor, I presented to the trustees a document on public comment so that we could formalize public comment. Long as we have a process and procedure in place, written, it can be allowed. I am going to ask, and I won't have to talk about this later, but I will ask each of the trustees to go back to, I think that was that very first meeting, and the document should be in there. I'm going to ask that you go back and review that, and let's be prepared to discuss it on Tuesday night at the committee of the whole meeting. And we will resolve this. But we're not going to have discord because of public comment. I promise you that. In terms of decorum and fairness, when the person was up talking and called someone's name, the person whose name was called started responding. Perhaps you did not see my response to that person, but I am thankful to that person that he heeded what I stated and when I asked him to stop, and he stopped, and it did not go further. Had I not done that, who knows by now you all would have been across the house fighting with one another. It worked. I thank you. I appreciate you. Mr. Gates, Director Gates? We have a resident who talked about storm drains, and I believe she talked about storm drains before. I'm going to ask that you revisit the storm drains and do whatever is needed to correct that situation. There should be no instance when a resident stand before us with a problem and then we tell her that she has to come back up here to fill out form when the person is telling us that there is a problem now. Let's get on it. If it's a monetary issue, or a lack of equipment, that's one thing. But we still owe it to our residents to maintain communication with them so that they know that you've at least, not you personally, that we have at least attempted to rectify their issue. Because residents, we are here for you. All of us are here for you, and we are to be held accountable for making certain that your wishes and whatever your concerns are attended to. And if we can't, we at least owe you that. So look for something. We had another person who's asked for speed bumps. I know for at least five times now on 217th Street. So if there is any reason, and whatever the reason, and I know there is a reason, communicate that reason with that resident so that she has a clear understanding of why we've not purchased any more speed bumps up to this point. Another person, thank you for acknowledging that those of us who are up here now can't control, can't research what happened to the $78,000 that went missing or the $10,000. Will we move forward to it? We certainly will. I certainly will. If I can stop being HR, working the front desk, doing the community service rentals, if I can stop doing some of that and just do some nayorial duties, I can get around to it. I can get around to it if I didn't have to so many PAC requests. Also, hopefully I've made myself clear. We are going to now move on with the rest of the agenda. But this has taken us one hour and 10 minutes, and we have to have some relief from that. Moving on, we're going to go with the presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Under A, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a resolution determining the appropriateness for Class 6 B status pursuant to the Cook County Real Property Classification Ordinance for certain real estate located in South Village. Please note that even though the location is very near where the other ordinance was approved, it's not the same one. This one, when those people came before us, if you remember, they wanted a Class 6 so that they can consider building onto their existing structure. That's what we will be voting on now. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved. May I have a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes. That motion carries. The next one is a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 5. This is for compensation, employee travel, and reimbursement. And this is looking at amending the South Village 2017 Employee Handbook. That's all we're looking at at this point. Amending the 2017 Employee Handbook. May I have that motion? It's been moved by Trustee Sapp. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Sapp, seconded by Trustee Burns. Are there any questions, discussions?
Yes. Madam Mayor, on this ordinance, I think last week for the committee of the whole meeting, I asked if we could have this correction for the home rule. I see it is still on here, and I think drawing a line through it, this is supposed to be a legal document. I think we're supposed to make the corrections on here without having any home rule on there at all.
You're absolutely right. Home rule should not be on there. But what you're looking at right now is not the legal document. The legal document comes after the vote, and there is a number assigned to that particular ordinance. That makes it the legal document that also carries the vote of the trustees. That's when it becomes the legal document. So we still have time to make that change from home rule to non-home rule. And we're going to ask our attorneys going forward to make certain that when they develop ordinances and resolutions for us, that they make certain that Will County is not listed on there, because that happens from time to time too, and that we are non-home rule. And if we can do that, then that would eliminate the concerns of some of the trustees right now. Thank you for that. Any other questions, debate? Hearing none, I am going to call for that motion to amend Section 5 of the 2017 Employee Handbook. And I will say this, that was from 2017. There's a lot more that needs to be amended in that handbook, and we will be bringing it forth. It should have been, because we have signed two different contracts for our departments that did not get updated either. But we will be updating it. I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No. Okay, directors, know that until we can change the travel piece, you are not to travel, not even for conferences. If you've signed up for conferences already, they just disapproved your ability to travel, okay? Okay? So hopefully, we will not be losing any registration fees. Hopefully, you've not signed up for any classes until we can resolve this, okay? Moving on, 5C. We need a motion to approve an alternate authorized agent for the for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and the resolution specifically will allow for the village clerk to serve as the authorized signee. May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns, seconded by Trustee Sapp. Any questions, discussions? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion, and I'm going to ask those who are communicating or feel the need if they can step from the rotunda and continue their conversation. Okay. Was there any comments or discussions on appointing the village clerk as the authorized agent for IMRF? Hearing none, clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
And Trustee Sterling?
No. Know that I will be communicating with the state's attorney's office and that office to make a determination of what needs to be done, and if we have the authority to move forward with or without the approval of the entire board. This is a piece that cannot be omitted. Moving on to new business, we look at financial matters first. I'm asking for a motion to approve transfers, payroll, and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of six hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Johnson, seconded by Trustee Burns, and I understand that there is a question on the floor. Trustee Sapp?
On page one of the accounts payable invoice number three nine five seven five six.
Can't hear it.
I'm sorry. Can you talk into the mic, please? And you say it's on page one? Okay. Invoice number three nine five seven five six, three nine five seven nine seven, three nine five seven nine eight, and the amount of forty-nine thousand eighty-five thousand twenty-two cents. Who is that invoice from? Oh, Barack?
Yes.
Oh, that's... What's the question?
Okay, you wrote.
In reference to the amount.
You have a question in turn. Well, know that it had, we have been advised not to pay that amount and to remove it for the moment from accounts payable, and we were advised by our corporate attorney to do so. There is some unrest there, so are you comfortable with us removing it?
I am.
So I'm going to ask eventually that you make an amendment to this seeking to remove that amount. But for now, are there any other questions, debates, concerns regarding accounts payable? Trustee Burns had her hand raised first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just heard you state that this was said not to be put on the accounts payable?
No, we had put it on, but then it was recommended that it be taken off, and it was too late for it to be taken off.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is someone keeping up with the questions and the dollar amount so that when an amendment is needed, it can be made? Is someone keeping up with that? You have it? Okay. Trustee Jones, you were the next one with the question?
If we are to approve this amount, is this taken out of forty-nine thousand or is it included?
Right now it's included, and that's why I said, I asked Trustee Sapp, would she be ready to call for an amendment? So what will happen is, since it's agreed that we would attempt to take it off, she would make an amendment to deduct that forty-nine eighty-five from the amount that's on the agenda. And so once it's amended, first you will ask for an amendment to the ordinance, then you all will approve that. Once it's approved that you're going to make the amendment, then she's going to state what the amendment is, and then you will follow up with asking, going back to your original question, and that is asking for a motion to approve accounts payable with that amount deducted. Okay? Okay. Anything else? I'm not hearing anything, so, Trustee Sapp, I'm going to ask that you request an amendment.
I am requesting an amendment in the amount of it will change to six hundred forty-six thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Say that again, please.
Six four six three three nine twelve.
Trustee Sapp made a motion to reduce accounts payable. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend accounts payable. Madam Clerk, please call the row. Trustee Burns seconded, I'm sorry. Right now, we're just amending.
Okay. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
And Trustee Sterling?
No. That motion carries by a vote of three to two. May I have a second amendment? A second motion rather stating the dollar amount.
Second?
Okay. That's fine. I'm sorry. I lost track, because usually it's a three-step. It didn't, we didn't do three-step that time, but you made that motion to amend accounts payable for six thousand four hundred, six hundred forty-six thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Three to two vote, that motion carries. Okay? We'll talk about how we will do amendments in the future. Let's go, but now we have petitions, agreements, and action items. This is the one that we talked. But see, and that's what I was saying when they told me that they did, Gerard did. Okay. There, there's unrest, so they want us, even though Trustee Sapp included it all in one, it is normally more than a one-step, okay? So now...
So, okay, hold on, let me, let me, okay, we just voted to amend the amount, and that was voted on, so what do we, voting on now? Can our attorney chime in on that?
Attorney, can you let us know why we need to vote for the actual amendment? We did not take it in the order that it needed to be taken.
Correct. You, the proper motion was to amend the dollar amount.
That was motion seconded and approved by the affirmative votes,
and the next motion would be to actually approve that dollar amount as part of the warrants. So what you did is you, your initial motion was to approve the warrants as presented. You took a bill off which changed the dollar amount. That was your motion. That was approved to change the dollar amount. But then you have to take it a step further to actually approve the new dollar amount.
Did we do that? The first amount of one was requesting the amendment of the dollar amount. Now, we're going to go with a motion to approve that amended amount of six hundred forty-six thousand dollars, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents. May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns, seconded by Trustee Sapp. Clerk, would you please call the row?
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes. Thank you. That motion to approve accounts payable and everything else was approved for six hundred forty-six thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents. Moving on to petitions, agreements, and action items. This is the one that we spoke of last week when we talked about opening the bids, and a question, a concern was addressed about one of the companies. I stated that both companies will come to a vote at this meeting, and all we have to do is to say no. If you say no to the first one, we move to the second one. If you say yes to the first one, there is no need to move to the second one, okay? So, the first one is a motion to approve the proposal provided by Altech Digital Service Incorporated to provide services to the village of Salt Village. May I have that motion? It's been moved by Trustee Sapp. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Sapp, seconded by Trustee Burns. Any questions, debate? Hearing none.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Kirk?
No. That motion fails. The next one? Motion to approve the proposal provided by Pace Systems Incorporated to provide IT services to the village of Salt Village. May I have that motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns. May I have a second? Again, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Burns, seconded by Trustee Sterling. Questions, comments, debate? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns?
No.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Sterling?
No. Thank you very much. That motion fails. So what will happen now is we will have to go to bid again. So we will go back out to bid so that we can get an IT company here. Moving on to the reports of officers. I've talked about public comments already, so I'm not going to speak on that again. We will talk about that, though, at the committee of the whole meeting. Can you please put that on? The next thing I want to talk about is OMA. Some of you have the information in your packet, and then another piece was placed at your desktop. The part that was at your desktop is the one that looks like this one. And that one is talking about the Open Meetings Act training requirements for all elected and appointed members of public bodies. I'm going to invite you to read through that. I'm not going to read to you. It is an online training. One elected official has exercised her right and has successfully completed the Fordy training as well as OMA training. And know that this training usually is needed ninety days, within ninety days after you have taken office. And we're very quickly approaching that ninety days, so it's not been done. I invite you to do so soon. You will give a copy to the village clerk and a copy to the mayor. Other things that I thought that I would give you is the Illinois Open Meetings Act to help better understand and comply with it. They, this one was updated two thousand twenty-four. The last one was a few years prior to that. So I thought that it would be good and helpful if I just shared this information with you, simply because it is definitely more thorough than the information received when we went to the SSMMA train, okay? I'm not going to read that to you either, but I just want you to have that in your war chest. You also should have a document. Ooh, a big document. That looks somewhat like this. We always say that we want open transparency. I'm sharing with you for no other reason bills that we've had for quite a while now, with legal bills that have not been paid. And some of them stem from two thousand twenty-two. And when, honestly, I, I, I don't know, because there's no documentation to show that all of these cases existed, that they were all managed or covered by... And all of this is one law firm. It's not more than one. I mean, we talked about all the other law firms that we owe money to. But this one is a big one, and it's quite extensive when you add all of this up. We owe them almost two hundred, no, we owe them a total of two hundred and twenty, two, two thousand. Uh-uh, that's just one. We just owe this company a whole lot of money. We're talking hundreds, because each one of them, some are fourteen thousand, others are twenty, some are sixty-one, nineteen, twenty-two hundred. We owe this one firm a lot of money. However, know that we do not have a mechanism in place. We don't have the lawsuits in place to confirm that this actually happened. I just want you to know that, and any suggestions, trustees and attorney, Mike, that you can provide, we need direction here. We know that we have all of those other ones, but it's going to be to a point where we will not even take in enough revenue, period, to pay for all of the lawsuits that we have. Okay? This, we're in a sad situation, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I don't know, I can't see how, we're going to pay all of these in a timely manner as the company is requesting that we do. So any suggestions you have, we are open to discussing, and your help is needed. Your leadership is needed in this direction, because we are in trouble. We are in trouble. The last thing that you, one other thing that you should have before me is a bill from SSMMA. Does everyone have that? I put that on your desktop, and I did not keep a copy for myself. If you can remember, an invitation went out to the trustees to determine if they wanted to go to the annual SSMMA gala. And some of you said yes, others said no. And I think that I've recorded everyone that said yes and everyone that said no. Well, I didn't have to record anyone that said no. However, we've been billed, and that's what you're looking at. Typically, when you sign up to attend a function, whether it's a conference, a conference... whether it's a conference, a training, meeting, anything among that line, if you find that you have to cancel after a certain period, and they didn't even give us a certain period, but if you cancel after your registration has been made, then the village does not assume that debt. Trustees, department heads either. You assume the debt when you sign up to attend something and then cannot, cannot go. So, those names who are listed, because only one person attended out of the six, no, two people attended out of the six. We cannot afford to pay the four hundred dollars to SSMMA because you did not attend. Okay? So, you are expected to reimburse the Village of Soft Village. That check will be made out to the Village of Soft Village. And in the signature line, you will put SSMMA Conference Restitution. Last thing? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
And those are the names that are there, whether they canceled or not. Canceling a day or two before.
I gave more time than a couple hours or a day. I said from the beginning, anything that comes on a weekday, I know for sure I have more time.
We'll, I'll go back through the emails.
Okay?
I'll go back through our correspondence, and if I have your name there erroneously, I'll make that correction, and we will have to be, but we did pay. You're more than welcome. Any questions there? Last thing? National Night Out will take place August the fifth. That is a Tuesday. We will not have a meeting that day. There has been no meeting scheduled for that day in our annual calendar. We never meet on National Night Out. National Night Out is an opportunity for community building with our police department, with our fire department, and now with our code enforcement in square. Typically, residents come out, residents and their children come out, trustees come out, department heads come out. It's our opportunity to meet with our residents where it's not just business oriented. It's to get to know one another. And I'm inviting everyone to please come out to National Night Out on August the fifth. It's only two hours, five to seven. Please give us that time. Okay? And you can read, so I'm not going to read the flyer to you, but I'm just making a very strong appeal and a strong ask that each one of you plan to attend. Usually, when the village holds something, our trustees and department heads typically come, unless, I don't expect anybody to take off work. But we usually come and support the village in whatever it is that they're doing. That concludes my report, so now we're going to move on to village clerk Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you to the resident who informed me that the PIN numbers were incorrect on the ordinance or the resolution we were doing for the Class 6B. Absolutely correct. Um, I looked into that, and that attorney subsequently changed that PIN number, so the PIN numbers will go in correctly, as will the home rule, um, thing, that will also be deducted. One of the final paperwork is done. There is no meeting next week because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, so we will not be meeting again because of National Night Out being the following week. We will not be meeting again until August twelfth. I also want to thank the resident who stole my thunder with the, uh, how the website is being updated, but um, we are making strides to bring the website back to life with updated information. The agendas will now be placed on the website, so you can check the website for the meetings. They will be placed on that website at www.soffillage.org. We are working to also put the minutes and the financial information that was removed from the website. We are looking to regain that information, and we will be updating our, um, our staffs and our, um, elected officials' bios, so you can get the old information off the website. We are working towards all of that, so forgive me as we take our time to make sure we're doing it correctly, but I am glad to see the agendas up there, and we will be putting minutes and all the other things that you saw, ordinances, resolutions, so that you can be using your website for what it was intended. And also, we're having an issue week after week with agendas being missing out of the box, and I don't understand why, because I'm very careful in making sure everybody gets the agenda. This is the second time trustee Burns told me she did not have an agenda. I always keep a second copy with me, just in case somebody forgets it, so I was able to give her a copy. But I assumed she picked it up earlier, because when I added stuff to her box today, it was empty, and I thought, ow, she picked it up. Then she sat down and said she didn't get an agenda. So, I don't know who the agenda thief is, but it isn't the first time we've had this problem. Madam Mayor also alluded to the fact that when she first looked at her box, she didn't have an agenda.
No.
She didn't have a packet. I'm sorry. The whole packet is missing. And same thing with, uh, trustee Burns. So, I hope that everybody, I don't, I don't know what's going on, but please respect our privacy with our mailboxes, the one little space that we have to disseminate information back and forth from the staff and, uh, board. So, that's, that's very, very important. Also, I do send electronically the board packet to all the trustees and the, um, the department heads that need them. So, they do have it, but it's not fair when they come to the board meeting that they don't have it. Um, as far as, uh, being an elected official and making it right for everybody to come to the mic and say what they want about you, uh, social media, yeah, as we know, is, um, rampant and has been for years. And that's okay. That, that's, that's what it was, it was originally made to announce important information, but people have used it for different purposes. But as some, the way I look at it is, if you know me, you know me, and if you don't, here's my number, okay? A lot of people are going to talk about you, doesn't mean it's true. A lot of people have talked about employees that have been fired previously by the previous administration, doesn't mean it's true. There's been talk of missing money in the previous administration, doesn't mean it's true. So, like it was stated, everybody has a right to an opinion, everybody has a right to public comment, but if you feel the need to talk about people in a negative way at a board meeting where we're supposed to be conducting the business of the village, that, as far as I'm concerned, I know the mayor disagrees, but it's your prerogative, but please, what I come here for is not to hear what somebody else is doing, and that, and it doesn't have anything to do with what we're supposed to be doing as elected officials in bringing this village back together again. Those personal issues, why don't you guys leave it on Facebook? Because I personally have been talked about more than I care to remember since two thousand nine. Before Facebook even came alive, I had people lining up through that door, ten, fifteen, twenty strong, some people who are still in this room, talking about me, but I'm going to tell you, it doesn't bother me. I know you. So, fair to public official, expect it. The other thing is, um, IML. The mayor just told any department head, if you have a conference coming up or a training, that you have to cancel it. I am of the mind that we need to cancel IML, because I'm going to tell you why. We will not have another meeting until August, um, twelfth, August twelfth. That's going to be a board meeting. We won't have a committee meeting until August nineteenth to bring it back to the table to discuss. We won't be able to approve anything until August twenty-sixth. The conference is September eighteenth. And I personally, from experience, and the mayor will back me up on this, you're not going to get a hotel room on August twenty-sixth. You're going to have to go down the street around the corner and pay for a cab to bring you to the conference, and you're not going to like getting up at seven o'clock in the morning to do that. Okay, so, uh, I personally wouldn't like to do that. Um, so I'm telling you, by not approving this ongoing situation, I think travel is really out for all of us. And I'm just making a suggestion. I'm sure the mayor is going to lean in and just, I just wanted to put the timeframe out there. There's no way we can bring this back to the table on August twenty-sixth and get hotel rooms and registration, because things do close. So, as far, um, timelines there, I don't see it happening personally. As far, as far as the IMLF is concerned, um, I agree. I'm glad the mayor is taking the stance of going to the Attorney General, because we are damaging, um, people that need their money, and I just don't understand it. I was actually told by one of the trustees that as long as one particular individual is employed by the village, everything's going to be known. So, just know residents, just know, I was told that. Just know that there will be no business conducted as long as that's certain, and I'm not using names, because I think you all know it, that one certain individual is here, everything and anything to do with money will be a no. But why should we discredit and disqualify payments to people who have worked hard for us and are entitled to very timely, because someone doesn't like the fact that we have employed an individual who has done nothing but fingers to the ground, boots to the ground, even before he got a job back with the Village of Soft Village? So, I'm just saying, sometimes we need to get the personal out of the business and take care of the business, because the people we are hurting are not the people up here and not the people in those seats, but the people who have earned what they're supposed to be getting. And the last thing is the bids. As the clerk, it is my responsibility to post the notice. It is my responsibility to post a notice for the bids.
Thank you.
It is my responsibility to post a notice in the newspaper for the bids. Um, and there's also a timeline that goes along with the bid process. This whole process, process could take two more months for us to be without, um, an IT company. The IT company that we had, their bid was actually, uh, their contractor was up at the end of June. So, working without an IT company with the amount of IT that we need to run this business, and this is what it is, it's a business, to make it go another couple months and to pay another eight hundred dollars for, uh, an advertisement in the newspaper. And my biggest concern is, if we've already opened bids publicly and we've already spoken the amounts that we've already opened, I'm going to have to talk to the attorney to see if it's even possible to do a rebid, because we've already divulged information, financial information. So, um, that's all I have to say about the bids. I'm just putting it out there. But, um, thank you, everybody, um, and whatever you have to say about me, I love you all.
Thank you, uh, village clerk, for this board discussion. Here goes, move on to the village council, uh, Congress. You have anything to say tonight? Okay, you have anything to say tonight? Do you have anyone from the police department? Let me just share something with you. If you've noticed the last meetings, we've not had a representative from the police department. We do not have a team. I know that you know that. But now, we had a commander who would come, but he retired, you know that. And the other commander opts not to come or to give a report, and that's why we've not had a report from the police department in at least a month, month and a half. But know that that position has been advertised, and we will be filling that position soon, hopefully. Fire Department Chief Stephen Barrett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and, uh, trustees. Uh, from the period of July eighth through tonight, uh, the Soft Village Fire Department has responded to sixty-six calls for service, uh, where this demonstrates an unwavering commitment of safeguarding our community and ensuring the well-being of every resident. Uh, as one of the residents stated, our new ambulance has been officially in service for about a week and a half, two weeks now, and, uh, it's going very smoothly now. In addition, I want to remind everyone about our vital smoke detector program. Uh, again, it's free and, uh, to every Soft Village resident. We did have, uh, three residents come in, uh, just recently to get smoke detectors, and so, uh, we appreciate you utilizing, uh, the resources that we have for you guys. Um, also, uh, on Wednesday and Thursday, uh, if you don't get anything else from what I'm saying today, I want everyone to understand that Wednesday and Thursday, we are expecting triple-digit temperature, temperatures. Please make plans accordingly. Check on your elderly, uh, neighbors and those with special needs. Uh, during this time, try to limit your outdoor activities, and we strongly advise against doing any type of yard work during this high heat, uh, index. Um, also, if you can, uh, check out our Facebook page, we do have, uh, tips and other resources for cooling centers and, and what you can do during this time. Again, let us cheer you night in our efforts to create a safe and a thriving environment for our families and our neighbors. Together, we can make a significant impact, and as always, stay safe and God bless. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Director, or any bench?
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees, and residents. Um, in front of you guys who have the cash balance as of today, the unrestricted fund is two point, two million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, seventy-nine dollars. The restricted funds is one million, nine hundred six dollars and three hundred sixty-seven, one million, nine hundred six thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars. The board just, um, approved six hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred eight, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twelve cents for accounts payable and payroll. Because we do not have the line of credit and the property taxes have draw, dried up, I will be asking the Board of Trustees, because we have brought a new policy that's not been placed in over a year, I'll be asking the Board of Trustees to authorize the board, myself, and the Finance Department to remove six hundred thousand dollars out of the water fund to be paid back around September, October, when the new set of property taxes come back into the village. Normally, the process would be to use the line of credit during this scope of the time, which I had advised the board would happen, because if you've been paying attention over the last month and a half, we have approved roughly two million dollars in past due invoices. And as the mayor alluded to a few minutes ago, we have another hundred to two hundred thousand dollars just in one attorney bill that will be also due in the next few months, based on the recommendation of a corporate attorney. One of the things I might ask the board to also do, because it has been mentioned by the board as well as residents, although we are not here next Tuesday, and some trustees had concern with time management due to work obligation, I would like the Board of Trustees to put a request for a special meeting next Tuesday to continue with moving with the budget process, because I, as I said two weeks ago, the goal of the mayor is to get the budget approved by the end of August. So, hopefully, the trustees will find a way to have a special meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock to not interfere anybody's time or work schedule. The mayor mentioned about IMLF, and this agenda was an option for the board to approve IMLF with someone other than the mayor. The mayor also mentioned that she was going to take steps to talk to the state's attorney. The reason she said that is because we was on a call about a week and a half ago with IMLF, and they are not taking steps to sue the village. We have received notice that I provide to the trustees that we still owe roughly sixteen to twenty thousand for a December bill that we have not paid, and that bill monthly is continuing to incur late fees and interest. So, normally, are we doing disservice to someone like Commander Evans, who has retired and cannot access his money? We also open ourselves up to additional legal fees. Um, as I recommended a couple weeks ago, because there is concern about me and who, who I am, call IMLF yourself directly. I'll give you the company number, and they will tell you legally, as one of the residents mentioned tonight, it's our obligation to pay, to act, let employees access their funds that they have contributed to, also, also, it's our obligation to take the money that we deduct out of the to pay, to act, let employees access their funds that they have contributed to. Also, it's our obligation to take the money that we deduct out of the check and to send to IMRF. So unfortunately, for whatever reason, like I said a couple of weeks ago, I'm not making an assumption. It was voted down with the attorney, uh, alternative option other than the mayor. It's a process that does not please for me. We, we involve any money, a change in hand. It's all done electronically. So if stuff is concerned, that mean you don't understand the process. Now, one of the residents mentioned about the 78,000 to 10,000 dollars. I wasn't here last Tuesday. I was on a wonderful vacation. But that has been addressed and mentioned the last two years. So let me give you clarity. The 10,000 dollars was investigated. There's a report at our police department. The person in charge of that 10,000 dollars, when it was confirmed it was stolen, got promoted. The 78,000 dollars, which has been in question for roughly two and a half years, has never been investigated, not by our police department, the state's attorney or the Cook County Sheriff. The main difference with that is the 78,000 dollar allegation, I say this 100 times, there's a surety bond that you can put in place, that is in place, that I, Anthony Finch, has been the only one in this village to ever have one. Headed when I first got here, so it was not something the village gave me. Has never been filed a claim against. So for any trustee, for any residents for that matter, that feel with their whole heart, because that's what the conversation is on Facebook and at these stands, file a claim against my surety bond or shut up and I leave it, the dot, dot, dot after shut up. Because if that's your argument, you have a remedy. The other thing that was brought up tonight was overtime. Maybe the mayor didn't mention since she's quote unquote the HR person, a salary employee cannot get overtime. Now, if it was done in the past in this village, that's something questionable. I offered my services on a Saturday or a Sunday to give people the opportunity to get this budget done. My whole thing is you can't say you want something done and then we have options to make it happen. You find reason why you don't want it to happen. So again, the invitation is open. Anytime after 5:00, anytime on a weekend, just tell me in advance. Because if you know me and you've been watching me, and I know a lot of you guys have, I love going to live music on weekends. So allow me some time to tell my wife, wait till I get done with work and then we go listen to a band. The final thing I want to mention is when we do this budget, there's gonna be some hard decision. And I'm gonna say it again, I say it every two weeks. If we do not focus on the finances, because for whatever personal reason, when I ask you all and I mean the trustees, who do you want to lay off? Please stand by your decision that you said no to line of credit. You said no to help getting these audits done. And now we delaying getting this budget done. So whatever personal issue against me is, again, I live in Creek. I go home, I sleep peacefully. It's your residents that are hurting. We have just found out today that the Menards account has been frozen since earlier this year. So when we ask for equipment to fix your streets and things of that nature, understand that our public works department can't go to Menards because now we pretty much on a COD. That's embarrassing because we couldn't pay a bill over a year. Um, with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. If anybody have any questions, please come see me. You have my email. I'm here 8 to 5, if not a little bit past 5 o'clock, and I'm available. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Johnson.
If that's the case for Menards, I will lay on our comp so if the payout's not.
Because we found out today, Trustee Johnson, that when one of our directors went up there to get supplies, the account was frozen. And they said, like so many other vendors, they have been sending emails to the former mayor, the former finance director, the former senior accountant, and no one has replied to them. At this point, they do not have Madam Mayor email, nor do they have my email. Because I was taken off the Menards account when I was a former public works director. The mayor was never on the Menards account. So the three names they have are no longer with this village. So like a lot of these other vendors will tell you, they have been sending emails for months and months and those emails never made it to accounts payable. So you can run your reports from January, February, December, and age report and see if Menards was on there. So that should answer your question.
Actually, we didn't really answer my question. If you knew of this, like Mr. Evans, if we paid for our council meeting tonight, we could have told him that. We could have added it on. We could have lifted up.
How, how can you add an invoice on? How can you add an invoice on if you do not have the invoice? Can't add what you don't. You can't add something you don't see?
Did you know the number?
No. And I knew the council paper number. Okay, how much is Menards billed then?
I'm asking you.
Exactly. I don't know like you don't know.
Okay, so why would you sit up here and make that whole drawn out statement if you don't have the correct numbers to give to us? Because we could have paid it tonight.
You can't pay what you don't have.
The accounts payable.
Okay, however you want to classify it, that's your prerogative. All I know, the Menards has not been paid.
Okay.
Menards account.
Okay.
We got a follow on you.
Okay.
Yes, yes. You do your job and vote correctly.
Excuse me to the both of you.
Which is why I really just don't want you in that cell.
Both of you. Excuse me. Mr. Director Finch.
Never put a man.
Director, girl.
Old lady. Hey, she called me a girl.
Director Finch?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for you. During, during your.
We do have offices taped here.
Okay, and?
Yes, ma'am.
Please have the officer remove distraction because we've been doing one.
I'm trying to give people a chance. I'm trying to give people an opportunity to do the right thing. Now, let's remove, let's resume this meeting, if at all possible. I've been accused of ending meetings before I should have. And I told you all before, and I'll tell you again. If it stays disruptive, I will end the meeting. Okay? Not dealing with this discord because what? All of us are what? We're not girls, we're adults. So let's act like adults. Mr. Finch, Director Finch rather, during your report, I heard you say that you were going to ask if we could borrow money from the water fund. When do you plan on making that request?
Well, I have to do it via email so we get a consensus. Unless there's a mechanism where we could do it tonight and have it on record.
It's not on the agenda.
Correct.
So that it could not be. I, I think though that considering that we are here and this is somewhat attuned to what Trustee Johnson was saying, is there a way that we could have communicated with one of the trustees to ask them to bring it forth during the council paper? We don't like to do the email consensus votes and all of that.
So.
So when is the, we don't meet now for another couple of weeks. What do we suggest?
So what, I, I believe as we go down the agenda, one of the trustees will mention, can we move 600,000 dollars out of the water fund to be paid back once we start getting property taxes?
We'll see how that goes. Okay, thank you. That was my only question. Anyone else have any question? Excuse me. Anyone else have any questions for Director Finch at this moment?
Uh, Director Finch did mention that we are trying to get the budget done and we are, uh, office is almost here and we are on a very limited time schedule. He did ask that we do a special meeting to do that. Uh, there are other things that we can put in on the agenda on Tuesday if we're going to do this special meeting. And if we're, uh, insisting on having this budget taken care of, I would not have a problem coming in on next Tuesday in a special meeting to deal with this budget, to deal with additional accounts payable. By that time, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Finch would have been able to get clarity from Menards and any other, any other vendor with numbers and he can have that and we can do that on next Tuesday. He clearly spoke that this is something he found out and he doesn't know the numbers. So obviously, he has to get the invoices and since this just happened today, I'm sure he's gonna have to meet with Menards in order to get the proper invoices, quotes and numbers. So I mean, we can't have that tonight if we're just finding that out today.
Thank you, Trustee Burns, and I appreciate, um, your bringing back to the forefront that we had some unfinished business in terms of his request. And so after we entertained, Trustee Johnson had another question?
Yes, if we're gonna borrow from the water fund, I would appreciate it if we could get anybody, Mayor. When are we gonna pay that money back into the water fund? How long will it take?
If, if I recall correctly, he stated that revenue starts coming back in in September and that those funds would be paid then. And we have a village clerk who's taking minutes, notes, so that she can develop written minutes. So that's the writing that I would think that you're asking for. It will be written in the minutes.
Okay, because the last time we borrowed for the water fund, it was not in the minutes. So I don't even know if that was paid back when we borrowed.
I was probably the clerk, but I wasn't the, I wasn't the. We had.
So, so.
Okay, okay. It doesn't matter which administrator. We're going to have it in the minutes. We're answering your question.
I do have a, I do have a.
One more?
Yes, yes. Uh, I'd also want to make it very, very clear. Uh, Trustee Johnson has a strong concern regarding, uh, the borrowing of money from our water fund. But we have been, but Trustee Johnson has consistently denied the 500,000 dollar line of credit.
I'm going to ask you trustee also to use the language, the trustee.
The trustee. Thank you so much. The trustee that's making this, we have asked consistently for months now for the trustees that continue to, uh, vote no on the 500,000 dollar line of credit. We need the credit for this reason. We don't need to have to borrow from our water fund because we're asking to keep the line of credit. So we're having an asinine conversation when we have an opportunity as trustees to keep emergency funds on hand. So when our low time and slow time is upon us, which we all know it is, we have these mechanisms in place.
But that's a new point now because.
It's new.
We, we.
It's.
We lost the opportunity to renew our line of credit.
But that's my point, my point, Mayor.
We lost the line of credit.
That's my point.
I haven't made my point yet.
No, my point is.
Okay.
We can't even do it now, so we're uproot without.
It's not that we can't do it. If we wanted to research another banking institution, then we would be under whatever rates that they would want.
Absolutely.
And I'm certain it's not going to be the rates that we had with the current. But it's something that I don't think that we are ready to bring it back, to have a line of credit. I'm at a point now where we may as well be realistic that we're not able, it should be plain as day. We are not able to take care of a considerable amount of business at this point in time. And it's unfortunate, but know that we will and we shall recover from this. Trustees, uh, Johnson, I'm gonna say one more time. Uh, is it on the same thing? Because you, you know. Because you know you can only speak on each topic. Yes, I'm gonna pull it. Could you guys help me with it? You fine?
Point of information.
What is your point of information?
So my question is with that. So we have the line of credit. I don't know if y'all remember, but we never touched the line of credit in our own administration. So why does it have to be now that we the new administration? We have to touch the line of credit.
Thank you. We were told.
It's not gonna be a point.
Are you gonna let me answer?
I would finish saying what I.
I, I think we got the gist of it. We got the gist of it. Know that if any other trustees are interested, it was told to us that the line of credit was not touched.
Right.
That, that was not the case. It was touched and it was paid back. It was touched around the same time. I see people nodding here because they remember it's where. We remember what we want to remember. We hear what we want to hear. But now I'm going to close this part of the discussion out and I'm going to. Sometimes you ought to send me all over every place. I'm going to shut down this part. Director Finch, thank you for honoring what I'm saying. This has gone on long enough and it's not really producing positive results for us. So it's just creating some energy that we don't need. I'm going to move on in the agenda. We have someone here with us for the very first time who's getting ready to give us a report. Know that the agenda has her name spelled H-E-I-D-A. Her webs, uh, her email has it spelled the same. But her name is actually H-I-L-D-A Fernandez. I'd liked to better when she told me her name was Maria, but now that she's insisting that I call her Hilda, we're gonna respect that. She's with community development, but she is our code enforcer. She's over the code enforcement unit, which is under community de- development. So please, give it up for.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees, clerk. Can you hear me? Yeah. Um, I'm actually very happy that I started working here. We're here? Okay. I'm happy to be here as a, as a code enforcer. Um, I've been with code enforcement since 1994. Uh, it's nothing new, just a different village or city for me. Uh, but I am happy to say that as of, uh, July 15th, we have gotten over 100 permits. And being by that is because, uh, from what I have noticed and have what I've seen, there's a lot of people doing work with no permits at all. They never came to village hall to require any. Uh, there's a lot of people that would say, well, I've been, I've done 20 properties here and there was never an inspector. Or they, they brought a BNF and they changed to safe build and then nobody else will call us. So that was kind of, you know, kind of hard for me because I'm like, oh my goodness, I, I'm not here to give out, you know, citations. I'm here for code compliance. Uh, it's already hard for people to, you know, be able to pay for a ticket when they can just go ahead and do what they're supposed to do in a property. So, uh, we've, uh, have processed more than 300 warnings to, uh, address initial non-compliance. We've had several stop record orders. Uh, we have done many, many, many point of sale inspections that, uh, since we don't have a, a transfer stamp package here, so we have to kind of like, you know, let everybody know, no, you need an inspection before you can transfer property, which is code. You have to. I don't care what city, what village you work, you have to make, have an inspection done before you can transfer property. Uh, also, August 1st, just let everybody know, we are gonna come out. We did our direct, uh, um, you know, training today. And so we will be starting August 1st with the next phase of enforcement, which includes writing tickets. Hello? Okay, also, uh, I had heard somebody talking about, um, you know, uh, the dog issues, cats. We've been talking with Cook County now for maybe a couple of weeks. Uh, they are willing to donate two vehicles to us, but we need a full-time employer, employment, you know, uh, employee to do the work. Uh, so I mean, this is good. They're giving us two vehicles. I mean, what more can we get for free, you know? And to be able to serve our community, our residents, especially with the ongoing, you know, dogs and cats. But yes, we do need to get another employee full-time. Hopefully, we'll be able to afford it. If you guys could please vote on it, yes, for our community. I mean, I don't live in South Village. Like he says, I leave and I go to where I get my services. But I really would like for, you know, talk about it. If you guys want to call me, my number, uh, my number's on the website now. It's 63. uh, my number's on the website now. It's 630-921-1446. Call me anytime between 9:00 and 5:00. 9:00 and 5:00, I will answer the phone. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, can, you said you need a full-time employee, what, to catch dogs and... So that would be considered, what? So
Yes.
At animal control department?
Animal control, yes. Animal control would have to do that. We can't do it. I, I wouldn't do it. I'm definitely afraid of dogs, but, but yes, we do need, they're giving us two vehicles, donating us two vehicles, but they said that we would have to hire...
Okay, that's something that, okay, that's something that we will have to revisit through the committee of the whole meeting and in ordinance. I would have to be drafted. So we appreciate, I didn't know anything about the phone for the cars. Are they the type of automobiles where you can safely?
Yes, the ones that have like
Transport?
Cages on the back? Yeah, so we could put the animals in cages in the back.
How impressive.
Yeah, two vehicles.
Uh, thank you. And I just want to publicly state that you've only been here a couple of months, but you have done a yeoman's job.
Thank you.
You really have, and, uh, you've cleaned up major messes. We found so many checks just in that office, just laying on the desk.
Yeah, we, we did. I mean, like I said, I...
One of them was $300,000.
$785.
Just on
We've been finding checks.
The check, I mean, on the desk. So that office is so much, we've still got a long way to go.
Yes, we do.
But, uh, it has come a long way and we thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, trustee Turner.
I'm Hilda. I just need to know you, the last four digits of your number, I didn't get it.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, 1446. It's on the website also. So you can call me anytime. Thank you.
Is that the time I called you this morning?
Yes.
I told you I'd wait until a decent time to call people, but it's, it's on my mind. Okay, we're moving on. Uh, Director Larry Gates?
Good evening, Mayor, Clerk, residents. So first of all, before I get into my report, I would like to address, you know, everyone about Public Works. Public Works, we put residents first while I'm here, okay? But there's only so much that I can do or put forward, but there are no finances or materials available to do such. But I will try to the best of my ability and maneuver around to help residents to the best of my ability and motivate my workers to do the same. So I just want to get that out the way for residents that think that, "Oh, well, Public Works just won't do it." They, a lot of times, you know, accounts are frozen due to, everybody know the financial situation that the village is in, and the administration is working adamantly to resolve that. But I would just ask for a little patience moving forward with that. And also, all seniors, I am implementing a program in Public Works where we help seniors that are at home by theirself and need that extra hand, that don't have family members. They can call branch removals, weeds, anything that, I do it myself, not even my employees. So, that being said, that will be posted in the future. Now to my, um, by monthly report. Okay. Streets and road dangers. The Public Works team is actively addressing roadway safety by identifying and repairing potholes across the city. Now, I am currently behind in my pothole repairing, uh, process because the account was frozen, so we too much behind, but we're working adamantly to catch up. So I again ask for patience with the pothole repair. Uh, my crews have to just dispatch systematically based on community reports and scheduled inspections. Uh, the progress of the pothole repairs, phase one and two of the potholes on the north side of South Village has been completed and the entire village will be patched. And we will review the patch work because sometimes patches get missed. And also be in, uh, will be in compliance with all the pothole patch throughout the village and residents that see stuff with, like I said, I'm always available. My number's out there. My phone rings, I'm on salary. I was told that I was supposed to 24/7 like a doctor. So I get calls in the middle of the night, I answer my email in the middle of the night for residents, come out. So I'm available. Okay. Water main breaks. The village has several water main breaks. Some of them are not as severe as others. Some are very minor. Those will be addressed accordingly. But we have no major water main breach right now that's causing any flow to where we might have to shut down water pressure or anything of that nature. All of those have been addressed. The fire hydrant replacement program will start mid-August. All the hydrants to be replaced have been located and, um, the mayor... All the hydrants? The hydrants that are being replaced, you got the list, right? Last, you just... Okay, well, I'll send it out to you and the trustees so everybody will be able to see all the hydrants that are being replaced. And also, one of the big things that my department is working on is GIS mapping with GL cap. Now, this mapping platform will enable, in the future, the village to go online and see where every hydrant, every valve is in the city and how operational it is. And, and every meter also, which is essential, especially with our big buck commercial meters, which will, I will be impli- will be implementing. Well, I'll talk about that later. Um, also, we, I want to say that, um, 90% of the commercial meters have been upgraded, or they have been upgraded, but they have been put into the, um, GIS mapping. So Mr. Finch, like, he was looking for a certain meter this week. We were able to look it up on the mapping and access it without sending an operator out there to see like, you know, what kind of meter is, the size, if we need to replace a thing of that nature. Also, landscaping and beautification. To enhance the curb appeal and community well-being, our team is maintaining public landscapes along medias, parks, and city-owned lots. Regular mowing and trimming and seasonal planning in key air, public areas have occurred. Also, we have been addressing overgrown vegetation, um, tackling vegetation along roadside, passways, and easements. Uh, we also, the main complaints in the village are our potholes and streetlights. And like I said before, with the streetlights, um, Public Works can only do what the budget allows. But I was notified today that moving forward, we will be able to replace some streetlights. A phase, we'll probably be doing a phase and going over the ones that we got the most complaints for. I needed the most in, um, a certain area. Uh, the mayor, Mr. Finch, I received information that moving forward that that can happen. So within the next, I move fast, within the next two to three weeks, we will see some new light in the village. Okay? Um, also, all phases of the branch pickup has been completed twice over in the village. So if you have branches, it's because you missed branch pickup. But like I said, I'm willing to help people, and if you honestly can't get your branches removed, you can call me and I will put my best foot forward to help you out to remove your branches. But I don't want this to be abused in the future because residents are responsible to remove their branches after they cut them down. Now that this Hilda will be writing tickets in the future, it's not gonna be a pretty sight to just throwing your branches out there. People will be getting excited. Okay? Also, someone mentioned storm drains. Okay. Storm drains are cleaned manually by Public Works operators. Now, let me explain why. This is because our street sweeper has been down for over a year, maybe like a year and a half. But on the bright side, I'm here, now the street sweeper is close to being repaired. I located the parts and we will be up and going maybe like Friday, but I will have to send it out to get it, um, collaborated, um, and ready for the upcoming season. Because a street sweeper has a lot of moving parts, not like a pickup truck, where you just put it out on the street, they got all these rushers moving, they got all of them in unison. So for it to be safe and to go out, I want to send it in. The mayor green-lighted that, yes. And Mr. Finch, so that will be happening. So when we get the big fall, the season comes through, our future will be getting introduced. So I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Finch, for supporting me on that and pushing me in the day. Do what you gotta do, and that's what I did. And also, I would like to thank Clerk Williams for her dedication and communication to the residents and the Public Works Department. Her efforts have led to the resolve of several issues in the village, and I just want to thank her again because she almost reached out and she let me know what's going on. She'll tell you when she, when she mentions something and, and she, it'd be big issues. You would think that it comes across like this, but a lot of times, stuff don't come across like this. And, you know, we all, you know, villagers live here and, you know, trustees, if you see anything, like anything like huge potholes, street, there was a stop sign down and a whole light bulb that was down. I knew that, though. They, they was down for two weeks, you know? And Clerk Williams told me, I got right on and was going to fix this that day. So I appreciate that because I get backlash, "Oh, why you not doing your job?" But sometimes it don't come across like this. But if it do, it's done, as good as done. So, and, and I got to appreciate it. But like I said, that concludes my report. And again, I'm on the day, Clerk Williams, she's great help and I don't care what nobody say about her. She right there, she right there with me. She been helping me out. She has, she's been right there with me, helping me out, making sure things get done. And, yeah, I really appreciate that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Thank you. And know that the residents really think very highly of you and Public Works. And I see that, and I see their comments, um, in support of you on the South Village email page. They do. They, they appreciate you and they're constantly giving you accolades. Maybe not to your face, but they do appreciate you, and I thank you for your report. We're moving on to, well, not reports, but comments from the board of trustees. And we will start with Aretha, trustee Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also want to just tell about all of our department heads, the skeleton crew that we do have here. Uh, thank you guys so much, um, for your hard work and your strong effort. What really makes a difference to me is that these people don't live in our village. They don't have families here, most of them. They come here, they work, and they work hard for us. And I want to say that I appreciate Mr. Finch, I appreciate, uh, Larry, who's the Public Works director. I thank you guys for looking out for us. And I just want to, um, say that if these that don't live here is looking that hard, looking hard out for us, then we on this board should be looking out as hard for each other as they do. No one should come inside your house and have to make sure your house is put together more than you do. And so I want to commend them for their job well done. Thanks for looking out. Please don't get discouraged because you know what, you guys? When they are doing, trying to do so much for us, and yet those of, some of us here are constantly sabotaging their work, it can become very discouraging and it can make people quit and want to give up. And we have good people here, and we don't want them to give up and we don't want them to quit. So the things that we need, I just continue to encourage our board to have a heart. Have a heart for your own neighbors. Have a heart. These people are retiring, they can't access their money. Have a heart to give them what they deserve. Have a heart. I don't know what, what it is that our hearts would be so hardened against people who deserve their due just after years and years of service and work. And again, we are not a very wealthy village. We all know that. So we need every bit of assistance, lines of credit, uh, keeping lawsuits down. We need every bit of assistance we can get to get our village moving and up and back on track. Because the last administration did leave us in a pickle. I'm in a pickle. Uh, so I just want to commend everyone for hanging in there with us. Please don't give up because I, I'm constantly hearing, consistently, I'm on the phones, people are ready to give up. And we can't afford that. Not, we just can't. So I'm just asking our board, our trustees, search your hearts because I don't want to run good people away. Someone must say the, the best way you can run away a good employee is by consistently, continuously accepting the bad habits of bad employees. That goes with trustees and everyone else. So thank you, guys. Continue to work with us. And it won't be long. It won't be long. We, we, we're a little bit away, so it won't be long. We'll have things, uh, we're gonna move in a different direction. It won't be long, so hang in there.
Thank you, trustee Burns. Trustee Johnson? Trustee Jones? Trustee Sapp? Say what? I, she's, you had a comment. Did you want to say it?
Say, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, I just have one thing I want to say. I resent the fact that IML is off the table. The, well, I'm saying it's off the table. I resent the fact that it's a possibility that we won't be attending IML. I think that, um, I don't understand the logic. I don't have to. However, I do look forward to the camaraderie, the networking, and the information sharing that's done at IML. So that's very important to me, and I hope that my comrades take some of that into consideration for themselves. Thank you. Our trustee Sapp, know that the subject of IML was not a point of business this evening. It was not a point of business. What was on the agenda that called before you for action was to approve amending the employee handbook, which included all of our employees. IML was not on the agenda, not at all. I'm sorry? It's on your mind, and that's understandable, but know that, um, I will be going to IML. I will be going to IML. Um, I have a speaking part and a being a moderator. So we did that before, you know, trustee said no to IML. So sometimes when something is of value to you, you have to go deep into your pocket, but you do it. I'm hoping though that all of this will be resolved by then. Know that also, in the past, when we were at the Hilton Hotel, the Hilton Hotel was smaller than the Hyatt Hotel. And the Hilton Hotel did not have adequate hotels nearby. So that's why it was such, such a struggle. But now that it's at the location that it's at, it's only a short distance to a couple of other hotels. So I don't think that that's gonna be the factor as it was in years past. But I'm confident... But I'm confident that they're going to accept registration. I don't know when the deadline for registration is. The clerk will find that out tomorrow and let us know. But usually, with IML, the registration, as well as with the hotel, we're usually invoiced with it. No, we not, because with the, I don't know how, the new, we cut them a check. I haven't been to the Hyatt either, but in the past, we would write them a check and drive the check down to them. So that's just something that needs to be looked at. You can look at it, but I also thought that we had said the trustees would be responsible for booking their own hotel. Okay, well, you'll do whatever you're willing to do, okay? But it's not all lost, trustee Sap. Okay? Let's move on to trustee Sterling. No comment. Senior Advisory Committee, and I'm going to ask that going forth, if it's a female, we say chairperson. We have to be gender neutral. So, chairperson Coleman, what do you have for us?
Well, I just want to say. Thank you. Thank you, Madam clerk, Chairwoman, Mayor. Hello? Oh, okay. Good evening to the board, Madam Mayor, Madam clerk, to the trustees, and the residents. Our weekly activities are, we have breakfast bingo every first and third Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And it's free. Free breakfast, free bingo with prizes to the winners. Also, for the seniors 50 years and older, we have senior fit every Tuesday and Thursday in the senior center from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Come out, enjoy us. Also, we have game night every second and fourth Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we play all types of games, big whiffs, dominoes, minnows, and other games. Also, our next exciting senior outing will be July 30. We will be going to Four Whiffs Casino in New Buffalo, Michigan. We meet at the senior center at 9:00 a.m. and we usually get back to the parking lot around 4:30. So with that, we also have our committee meeting every second Thursday in the senior center at 5:00 p.m. And also, if you have any activities or any outings that you would like for the seniors to do, please contact me. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Someone asked me today if it was too late for them to go to the casino trip. They asked on Facebook, is it too late? I have to turn in the money tomorrow. If they could get in contact with me in the morning, I'm going in the afternoon around 1:00 p.m. I respond, I don't know the resident, but I just said, I'm certain that they'll try to make room for you. And I asked her to call the number that was on the flyer. So when I get home, I'll send another note to her and say that she needs to be in touch with you by, did you say 1?
1:00 p.m.
1:00 p.m. I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, Chairperson Grant St. Anderson. Do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am. The report for the Police and Fire Commission consists of, we are still working with a vendor. R and A on setting a date for the fire testing and advertising in the blue line for August 16.
Thank you. I have no comments from the mayor at this point, other than to say, remember to join us for National Night Out on August 5. Remember that there is no meeting. Well, no. Are we for certain? Because trustees, you all did not state whether or not we would have a meeting on the 29th, which is next Tuesday, and next Tuesday is the 5th Tuesday. But that special meeting would be strictly looking at a budget review for one or two of the departments. I'll say here, I am, I am willing to have a special meeting to get this underway. Okay. 7 o'clock. Yeah, so we said we were going to do it the exact same time that you are normally are able to make it here. The only thing is, it's the 5th Tuesday opposed to first, second, 3rd, and 4th Tuesday. Yes, no? Okay. Did you say yes, trustee Sap? Okay. Trustee Johnson? Thank you. Trustee Sterling. Wonderful. Notice that, note that it's been stated in the open meeting that we will reconvene the previous budget review meeting from a few weeks ago. So therefore, no notice of the special meeting would need to go out. I would still ask though that it be posted, even though it's not required, but it's nice to give people a reminder. Okay? Anything else for good of the whole? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by trustee Sap. Can we all agree to adjourn but through common consent? Wonderful. Have a wonderful weekend.